Good morning, everyone. Today is Thursday, July 15th, 2021. And we're here for a work session. And we'll start with the pledge allegiance. And Catherine, can you please take the lead?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Catherine.
It's the 22nd.
Oh, Thursday the 22nd. I realized that they did print out and we're going to correct that.
I thought you were in a time machine.
Yes, yes, that was a...
It's an important day.
It is. The 15th was an important day for us also, remembering anyway. So I hope everyone is well. And again, I just want to mention that vaccinations are available at any pharmacy of your choice throughout all of Long Island. And we are not into vaccine mandates. However, if you feel that you are able to, we encourage you to please do so. And we have a few announcements for today. First and foremost, I want to wish a very happy birthday to Councilman Rothwell. I'm told it's a milestone birthday. Is that correct?
It is the big 5-0 today.
Okay.
Good for you.
Happy birthday. And listen, when you reach the double nickel, things change. So you're five years away from 55.
Still under the speed limit.
You still are.
Thank you.
Yes. And on Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, the Riverhead Police Department will kick off the 37th Annual National Night Out to heighten crime and drug awareness in our community. And I hope that you will participate. Winners of the National Night Out poster contest will be recognized during our August 3rd, 2021 Town Board meeting. Members of the public are encouraged to leave their porch lights on between the hours of 7 o'clock in the evening and 10:00 p.m. in the evening in support of this effort. If you have any questions, please call the Riverhead Police Crime Prevention Unit at 631-727-4500. And let me put an extension to that. That's going to be extension 322. And next, last night was the James Ford Carnival Parade. And it was a fabulous night. The weather held up. And it was great to see all our residents lining up and cheering and eating and enjoying some spirits. And the carnival will be held nightly until this Saturday. And it's going to end with fireworks at 10:00 on Saturday. So we encourage you to enjoy these festivities. I know you were there. And I'm sorry to tell you, I know you couldn't make it. But it was a great night.
It was exciting to be there and especially thank all our volunteer firefighters, James Ford and throughout, it looked like the whole East End of Long Island.
That's what I was going to say.
Fire truck apparatuses. So it was a great event. I had my share of fried Oreos.
Yeah, and I heard it was 130 trucks or more.
It seemed to be at least that.
I want to echo one of those sentiments. I was at the James Ford Parade. And I want to thank the James Ford Fire Department for putting that together. I think it's one of our favorite events in Riverhead. And oh my goodness, I didn't even know there were that many fire trucks out on the East End. So it was a really great night. It was perfect.
Catherine, I didn't notice. Why don't you join us up here?
You know what? This is usually where we sit for work session. I like to be down and meet with the people and look at site plans and...
Yeah, but there's no site plans today. Why don't you just join us? It's more cohesive.
Well, I like...
Okay, it's fine. We're going to move on.
This is where we sit for work session and I come up there for the meetings.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to, why don't you guys come down and sit with me?
Okay, so lastly, congratulations to Riverhead. Last night, Dan's newspaper awarded private and public entities with an award as the powerless of Long Island. Sheriff Tulon, Jay Schneiderman, Lee Zeldin were also recipients of this award. And there it is. He's holding it up. It looks like an Emmy.
He weighs about 20 pounds, I think.
Actually, we weighed it this morning. It was 14.6 pounds.
I'm pretty good at that.
Can you see that on the camera? Come up here with that.
Okay, you want to see it?
Yeah, I want to see it.
I do too.
Hey, you're getting old now. Wow, look at that.
Oh my god, that's heavy.
Very nice.
And yes...
Is that going next to your name, please?
Yes.
Very nice.
Well, it does have my name on it. I must note that this would have never happened without the support of all of Riverhead town employees. And so this is congratulations to Riverhead.
Can we applaud for all of our town employees?
Yes. And moving on to our first discussion. With us today, we have Kelly Malaski and several of her members from the CAP group. And I know they've been wanting to present and it finally happened. And I see Kenneth Cameron Rothwell, the Councilman's son, who's been an avid supporter, right?
I have been proud of both my sons. Kenny joined CAP many years ago. Cameron followed in his footsteps. They love the program. You guys do an awesome job. And I'm so proud of their participation over many years. So great job to all the members of CAP and the leaders.
Yes, the two leaders who are here. And thank you. And hi, good morning.
So I just want to say good morning. As you know, my name is Kelly Malaski. I'm the coordinator for the Riverhead Community Coalition for Safe and Drug Free Youth. I'm here with our executive director, Felicia Skakosa, co-coordinator of the Riverhead Youth Coalition, Cynthia Redman, our four youth members that are going to come up here in a little bit, Coalition member Chief Hager Miller. And we have other coalition members who are supporting us via live stream. So many of you may know our youth programs from maybe Pure Leadership, if you've ever participated in the Say No to Drugs march. And that's called Pure Leadership. But we have another group called the Riverhead Youth Coalition that was established in 2015. And what the Riverhead Youth Coalition does is they work in the community to plan and implement environmental strategies to prevent and reduce youth substance use within the town of Riverhead. And today, they are going to speak a little bit about what they do and about a new hot topic, as you know, marijuana. And they're just going to educate you a little bit about what they've done and what we can take steps, we can take together to make sure our youth stays safe as the landscape of marijuana changes within our community. So without further ado, I'm going to invite Alexandra up here first.
Kelly, can I just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Have they researched this? And it's a collaborative effort? Are they getting credit for this in school?
So the Riverhead Youth Coalition is a group comprised of students in grades 7 through 12. And we meet usually at night. We do some stuff during the day. Like we'll take field trips to do presentations. We have our meet and greet, which many of you have been to. They'll come out for field trips for stuff like that. But most of the stuff we do is outside of school. They do get community service for their efforts. They're going to talk a little bit about what they do. But they worked really hard to plan and write this presentation that they're doing today. We've been working on it for a few months now, so yeah.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
Good morning. My name is Alexandra Santoro. And I'm going into 10th grade at Riverhead High School. I'm a member of the Riverhead Youth Coalition and I am active in CAP Pure Leadership. Here at the Riverhead Youth Coalition, our mission is to prevent youth from abusing alcohol and other drugs while also promoting a safe and healthy neighborhood. Riverhead Youth Coalition focuses on community-based environmental initiatives to address the factors that lead to underage drinking and drug use. Often, this entails forming relationships with law enforcement, business, government authorities, and other sectors to reduce access to these substances. Through social media and public service announcements, youth coalition members also have a unique voice to promote community awareness about these concerns. Riverhead Youth Coalition members use their leadership abilities to make a positive difference in the Riverhead community by increasing awareness about the dangers and effects of drug and alcohol addiction among children and teens, as well as assisting in the reduction of access to these substances. We do this through a variety of projects, such as the Samantha Skunk Program, which is performed by several members for youth audiences, such as summer camps, which teaches children about medicine safety, the sticker shop campaign in which the Riverhead Youth Coalition, with the help of local law enforcement, business owners, and adult volunteers, place brightly colored stickers on multi-packs of beer and other alcoholic beverages, warning customers about the penalties for purchasing and providing alcohol to minors. Public service announcements, where members record PSAs with their partner, 101.7 Beach Radio, and send not only entertaining but powerful messages about the dangers associated with alcohol and drug use. We have a PSA that we are going to play for you right now.
So this was the latest PSA the Riverhead Youth Coalition wrote and recorded in March, just a month before, a few weeks before marijuana was legalized in the area.
We are the marijuana mythbusters. We're here to clear up misinformation about marijuana. Myth: Marijuana is a plant, so it must be healthy. Fact: THC is the component of marijuana that gets you high. On average, today's marijuana has 10% THC. High levels of THC can cause irritability, paranoia, and in some cases, hallucinations. Myth: Marijuana is a harmless drug and can help you feel better if you're having problems. Fact: There is no such thing as a safe drug. Marijuana is addictive. It can impact brain development and cause respiratory illness. Marijuana can make feelings of depression worse. Myth: It's safer to drive high than to drive drunk. Fact: Marijuana impairs your judgment, slows your reaction time, and messes up your coordination. Driving high is just as dangerous as driving drunk. Myth: Using marijuana will make you look cool in front of your friends. Fact: Marijuana hurts your relationships and causes you to lose focus on what is important. Final fact: Marijuana laws are changing in some states. But just because it's legal doesn't mean it's okay, especially for young people. If you or someone you know is struggling with substance abuse, help is available. Visit riverheadcap.org for more information. Brought to you by the students of the Riverhead Community Coalition for Safe and Drug Free Youth.
Kelly, is this on the, oh no, website?
I sent the link to Cameron.
Today?
Yeah. A few days. Yeah, a few days.
Okay.
The written part on the website, it wasn't possible for us to answer the audio link.
Okay, so we'll get that done. Very well done.
I do hear it on the radio a lot. Great job.
Great job.
Other projects include, but are not limited to, medication takeback events, programs that we do at the elementary schools, town hall meetings, and presentations, such as today's. We are here because marijuana is becoming a hot topic in our community. Marijuana is the most frequently abused illegal drug in the country. The legalization of marijuana in some states remains a controversial issue. And there continues to be a lot of debate about whether or not marijuana is harmful to one's health. On March 31st of this year, Governor Andrew Cuomo signed the legislation into law which immediately legalized adult-use marijuana. Marijuana is already used among kid audiences in Riverhead. And seeing the problem become worse is the last thing we would want. So ultimately, today, we wanted to share our concerns and how we can make sure our community remains safe as marijuana use comes into play here.
Thank you.
Nice job.
And who's next? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Adriana Mosca and I'll be going into 9th grade at Riverhead High School in September. As the town of Riverhead will be making important decisions about marijuana, the Riverhead Youth Coalition believes the town board should be aware of the rate of marijuana use among youth. In 2018, Riverhead Community Awareness Program conducted a prevention needs survey of 6th, 8th, 10th, and 12th graders attending Riverhead Central School District to obtain data regarding youth substance use. Of the students surveyed, nearly 11% of 8th graders had reported using marijuana at some point in their life. Nearly half of the 12th graders had tried marijuana. 30-day use is an indicator of frequent substance use. At that time, 22% of 10th graders and 31% of 12th graders had used marijuana in the past 30 days. Of the high school seniors who had used marijuana, 24% of them had used a vape device. Much like the rest of Long Island communities, youth marijuana use in Riverhead is higher than the national average. Next year, next school year, CAP is planning to conduct another survey to determine the use of marijuana and other substances among youth. While there are many people who will say marijuana that marijuana is a harmless drug, research of youth marijuana use tells a different story. Brain development is not complete until the age of 25. Marijuana use negatively affects the teenage brain. Youth who use marijuana regularly are more likely to have a hard time learning, experience memory problems, and poor school performance. Many times, young people who use marijuana lose interest in the things that were important to them, like sports, activities, and relationships. Marijuana is addictive. It is harder to stop using marijuana if a person starts at a young age. Research has shown that 1 in 6 adolescent marijuana users will develop cannabis use disorder. Heavy teenage use of marijuana is associated with higher risk of depression, anxiety, and suicidal thoughts. Like alcohol, marijuana may be legal, but it is always unhealthy and unsafe for youth. Even though people will have to be 21 to buy marijuana, kids will still be able to get it, just like they do with alcohol. The Riverhead Youth Coalition hopes the town board will think about laws and policies to protect people who don't want to be exposed to marijuana and to prevent youth access.
Thank you. And here we have Cameron Rothwell.
Hi, as you probably already know, my name's Cameron. I'm going into my senior year at Riverhead High School. I'm just going to talk quickly about environmental scans and what we do with them. Environmental scans are a way that we collect data throughout the community by observing community problems to bring to attention. By doing environmental scans, we can help find ways to solve problems that may be brought to our attention. Environmental scans are something we do not to create trouble in our community, but to help the community and the people who live within it. Environmental scans can include observing signage, advertising, ID checking, placement product, product placement, flavored products, and much more. Past environmental scans have shown several stores in the town of Riverhead displaying large amounts of signage in our windows, some of which are targeting youth in the community. Ways that we can better our community are work with town of Riverhead, working with town of Riverhead and using your code enforcement. Using town code enforcement and town to be able to inform us... Using town code enforcement to be able to inform of us using town... I wrote the same sentence twice. I don't know why. And you told me to fix it too.
Cameron, you just wanted to drive that point.
It's very important.
Keep going.
We would like to create friendly relationships with store owners to better understand town codes and come to agreements to better our community. Many towns and villages surrounding the town of Riverhead have been very effective in keeping advertising to a minimum and creating a better community overall. It is important that we enforce advertising as many types of it can be normalized towards youth. For example, companies such as big tobacco companies always seem to target their ads towards youth. If you look at posters, they always have white teeth, smiling, playing with a football, playing with kids even in ads. This is just a couple examples of why using advertisement targets youth and why you should just keep an eye on it, limiting it, using town codes to help. And like I said before, a better way, ways to better working with town of Riverhead and better the community, making sure that town codes are better known to store owners, because a lot of them aren't even aware of some of it. It's a lot, as you all know. We can help our community by using Riverhead Coalition members to make day-to-day observations and bring problems in our community to attention. Environmental scans have proven to help many counties and towns around the country. Most problems are a simple solution and they were only caused because of unknown laws or codes. Riverhead's youth coalition ultimate goal in the end is to create a better and safe drug-free environment for our youth. And as you know, while marijuana is now legal in town of Riverhead for sale, in New York State, we hope that we can keep Riverhead clean and safe for all and not let it affect our community poorly.
Cameron, thank you. We know that we're going to address a lot of these issues to code. And the Councilman Rothwell has been charged with it. He's a former code enforcement officer. So he was the perfect, when he came on board, to put them on. And you're right, we are going to use our codes. And we might have to develop some and adjust some. And thank you for bringing that point up. Hi, good morning.
Sorry.
Welcome to town hall.
Good morning. I'm Tiffany Perez and I'm a rising sophomore at Riverhead High School. Today, I'll be reviewing some of the best practices presented by CAP in April that were effective in many other states across the country that have already legalized marijuana. There are many best practices you can take. And you can take, and today, I chose to point out a few that were important to me. The goal of this, the goal of these best practices is to prevent youth access to marijuana use in our community. The first best practice in regards to location are to determine retail sale and onsite consumption locations with consideration given to proximities to schools, daycare facilities, houses of worship, playgrounds, parks, beaches, and other youth and family zones. Also, to establish clear, family-friendly zones that prohibit alcohol, tobacco, vape, and marijuana use. The second best practice regarding with the marketing, advertising, and signage is to restrict advertising that focuses on giveaways, samples, and/or coupons for alcohol, tobacco, vape, and marijuana. And require signage that communicates laws pertaining to marijuana sales and use, "We car, no underage sales," etc., in English and Spanish because of the great Spanish-speaking population in Riverhead town. The next best practice in relation to clerk training is to establish training requirements for individuals serving or selling marijuana at retail and onsite locations. Training should focus on identification checking and understanding of local and state marijuana laws. With enforcement and compliance, we can enforce social host law which prohibits alcohol from knowingly allowing alcohol and other drug use on property they own, lease, or otherwise control. And increase awareness of the Riverhead Police Department tip line to encourage community members to call with marijuana non-compliance concerns. In terms of public events, we can install signage in English and Spanish during public events that clearly communicates town policy. And to enforce policies related to alcohol, marijuana, tobacco, and vaping at public events. Finally, some additional considerations. CAP can work with the town board to provide education and training for stakeholders and community members that focus on the risks and consequences of youth marijuana use, including webinars, brochures, training sessions, etc. With these important best practices, we can ensure the safety and well-being of Riverhead town and the youth in our community. Thank you for the opportunity for us to present at this town meeting. At this town meeting, we wish to continue partnering the Riverhead Youth Coalition and Riverhead town to keep it safe and drug-free. If there is the need for more information or questions about our presentation, please feel free to contact the coalition. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, everybody did such a great job. That was really, really well done. I'm impressed. And I hope at some point that I see you guys sitting up here on the dais. And I thought all the presentations were good, but yours is exactly what we'll be looking at and doing. So many good points in there that we, you know, we have to think about as a board because that's what we are directed to do at this time. So, thank you.
Yes, I want to thank you. Very well done. And I was holding off on this thought until you guys presented because I know you gave us a little bit on the topics and code was a big issue. And we need to form a cohesive committee with the entire community. And I would love for you to join our marijuana task force. Okay, and we're going to start reaching out to people. We have to change code. We have to develop code. We have to involve the entire community. And I think that you guys will definitely be a great asset to the committee. Don't you think so?
Absolutely. I just want to say too, on behalf of CAP, the appreciation of the work that you guys have done over the years. Marijuana is new to us. It's new to the state. As you know, I voted to opt out. I did not want public consumption and I'll be an advocate against it.
And I did neither.
I just feel that it's going to lead to major concerns about driving, you know, impaired driving specifically. But, so I'll be an advocate for you. And I'd like, and I know that you'll be a great voice in our town to help protect all of our residents because it's a great concern of us. I also just want to say, it's a unique place. I have my other son, Kenneth, was working in Covanta right now. And your work, and so there's a reason I bring this up, is he's texting me right now going to let CAP know that they're incinerating large amounts of your drug collection today. So the Riverhead Police Department, the chief knows, just went there and they just delivered, chief. So I just got the confirmation that all the drugs are being incinerated as we speak. And so my kids love your program. You guys have done great. And I look forward to certainly being an advocate, you know, with you to protect our kids in the community.
I just want to touch on what Cameron said. Our coalition, as he said, our coalition does routine environmental scans.
Kelly, you got to go to the mic.
We do, we do a, do an annual community mapping activity. We do environmental scans. So we can really help you. As Cameron said, we do this to make our community a safer and healthier place for everyone. So if you guys need any more information on any of those findings that we have seen or if you ever want to participate in one of our community mapping projects, you guys are welcome to. We like to have representation from all sectors of the community because we find when we have representation from all 12 sectors of the community, we're more likely to prevent and reduce youth substance use together.
So Kelly, can you clarify for the people listening exactly what you're referring to with an environmental scan?
Yeah, sure. So we have an observation sheet. And it's just different stuff we're looking for. Like so, for example, we work really closely with Alive on 25 to make sure that Alive on 25 is a family-friendly, safe event. You know, I worked with Steve. Felicia and I did a responsible server training, which is required by the town policy for all servers at public events. We provided wristbands to the Riverhead Country Fair, to the Polish Fair. There's signage that is up during these public events. So we just go around just to make sure that, you know, these different considerations and the signage is up and that, you know, people are following the wristbands and that IDs are being checked. And we're looking for positive and concerning feedback. And then we can report back to event organizers, you know, hey, we saw this. Can we fix, you know, this? It may not be safe or it may be easier for youth to access alcohol. And we can do that in a lot of different ways. You know, just going around and looking at the different stores and noticing that there's a lot of alcohol signage in some of the establishments or there's a lot of vape advertisements in the window fronts of some establishments in Riverhead.
And Kelly, I know I attended, under COVID, And Kelly, I know I attended under COVID one of your presentations, and didn't you have the Coast Guard, was it the Coast Guard with you?
The National Guard, yes.
The National Guard, they're also an integral part of the scan.
Absolutely, they help to...
I was very impressed.
Yeah, they help to facilitate community mapping efforts. Our community mapping project that we do, we work with all the stakeholders in the community to identify protective factors, safe areas in Riverhead that are family-friendly, or where youth feel that they can go without being compromised by substance use, and then we also identify risk areas, areas that may promote substance use for youth. So we did that last year, and we came up with over, almost 100 points from our adult and youth members that identified safe areas in Riverhead and areas of risk. And we have had a lot of success with those risk areas, and then working as a coalition to implement effective strategies to really address them.
So certainly, this is a topic that's newer to the town board, and this is something of great importance that we have to really delve into, to make sure that we get it right. But I will say that, well, going back to when I was working with you guys, you guys have been working on this topic a long time. You've been discussing this for quite some time, and really, you're a great resource for us, and you brought up a lot of good topics today, so I'm glad that you were all here.
I'll just add, we can learn from our youth. Cameron was the one that actually, over dinner table discussion, told me about the environmental scans and what you're doing, and he was very specific about different locations throughout the town, so he enlightened me, and I immediately went and met with Rich Downs, who's the head of our court enforcement department, about the percentage of window covering was the topic, and so he's like, wow, and so he was initiating a meeting with his department to specifically go out there and to do a visual check on, and just re-familiarize himself with the window coverage codes, and so what's in place, and if anything needs to be adjusted or changed, so he's going to work on that, so, thank you for enlightening us.
And let's not forget the police chief.
Yes.
He's on CAP. By the way, the chief wins all the games. Right? He's so competitive.
He's an integral part of, supportive, and I know, anytime with CAP, his eyes light up, so, he's very, very supportive of you, and we can't forget him, and we thank you for your presentation, and you are going to be in touch with us real soon, and back and forth, and we're going to work with you, yes.
So I have just two comments. One was that, in regards to environmental scans...
You have to go to the mic, sorry. Otherwise, the audience can't hear.
In regards, I'm Felicia Skokozza from Riverhead CAP. In regards to environmental scans, some of our early, early coalition work was environmental scans around public events, which helped the resulting town of Riverhead alcohol policy come to be. I know Mr. Kozakovic was an integral part of that, as well as Chief Hagamelo, so we're hoping something similar with marijuana for the town. And my other comment was that I hope you have youth representation on your marijuana committee, that would be really good.
We're going to use some of your guys and you, absolutely.
And I'd like to take a photo of the youth coalition with the town board.
Okay, and I just, Kelly, I just want to make one more, ask you a question, actually. Didn't you receive a certain award recently?
It was a national award.
It was a national award, you had mentioned that.
Coalition of the Year, oh, that was right before the, that was a lifetime ago, right before the pandemic.
Okay, so you need to mention that.
Yes.
I actually have the plaque hanging in my office.
So our coalition, Adult and Youth Coalition, was awarded Coalition of the Year by CADCA for showing long-term, sustainable outcomes in reducing underage drinking over 10 years. So we also won short-term and intermediate in the years prior to that, so...
That's, you should be proud of it.
We are.
Great, I'm glad it came out, so thank you again, everyone, and you said you wanted a picture?
Yeah.
With us, absolutely.
You guys want to come up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up.
Aren't you going to be in?
No, I'd like to...
Come on, Cameron.
The leader's sister. The whole of them.
Good job. Good job.
We're not done.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on, we're moving on to the next discussion, I'm going to invite Steve Schogge and Kristy Verity to join us.
Steve's at another meeting right now, so Kristy will be here.
Okay. And it's a matter concerning their budget. The budget for the bid, Kristy? Good morning. Live at 25 was...
Wonderful. So much positive feedback, thank you to the town for your support and for really working fast with us to make everything happen.
I remember in March when we were talking about plans, a smaller version...
Right.
With COVID restrictions, but all that effort that you put in, as soon as the governor opened up public events, you were able to run right into it, and congratulations for the proactive approach.
Thank you, thank you. We worked really hard on a safety plan, you know, and there's still all of those regulations in place, and we still kind of enforced most of the things that we put into that plan initially, such as the removal of the barricades. I'd like to thank CAP, I know they're not here any longer, but like Kelly said, they do help us with our alcohol policy enforcement and training, wristbands, things like that. So wristbands were new for us at Alive on 25 this year with the removal of the barricades, but everything seemed to work well. We have not heard one complaint from police, from emergency services, from the town, or from the public, so we thank you to everyone for their support, and to everyone that showed up and enjoyed the fireworks and the shows, and it was a great, great night.
Well, with the shortest amount of time to put this together, you produced the largest and the best Alive on 25 yet.
Thank you.
So kudos to you and Steve, I know the work that you do is being your lay is on the bid, and a lot of it is just you and Steve, honestly. So we appreciate it, and we appreciate the hard work you put into it, and the final product is fantastic.
Thank you very much.
So thank you.
So I thought that despite the fact that the weather was so warm, it was a huge turnout.
Yes.
And aside from that the whole event was nice, the fireworks were actually really good.
Fireworks were wonderful.
We were watching, everyone kept saying, these are good fireworks, these are good fireworks.
Yes, yes.
Kristy, did you get a chance to go through the, onto the, walk along the riverfront?
No, unfortunately, I did not, but I heard that there were a lot of people down there.
There were yachts out there.
Yes.
I've never saw, in 40 years, I've never seen so many boats on the riverfront.
Wow, that's great to hear.
And it was impressive.
Great to hear.
Yes.
Yes, and the fireworks company, Santori, just of note, they were very great to work with, and they accommodated the bid many, many times, you know, as we were so unsure of what was happening 2020 with Alive on 25, and then, you know, pushing fireworks to New Year's Eve, and then after, you know, working with Pecan Valley Medical Center and determining if that was not the ideal time to do so, Santori then, again, like, pushed our credit to 2021 and 2022, so we were very happy, you know, working with them, and they've been very accommodating, so, but they will be back next year with us and putting on the same show.
Yes, great, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, just of note, for the next three events on Pecan Avenue, we have the new for 2021 Kids Zone, and we're having some different organizations in there, local, our goal with that was just to fill it with local, like the library, the recreation center, some local companies that offer kids activities, and then fill in with other vendors, so we're introducing the outdoor movie in Grand Chabot Park, thank you for your approval on that. So this will be brand-new, a brand-new section of Alive on 25, and we're really looking to increase our family-friendly activities at the event as well.
Are you having the bubble thing?
We are, yes. Bubbles will be there. Okay, so thank you for having me today, so I am here, unfortunately, Steven Schogge is at another meeting today, so I'm here to talk about the potential for a bid office downtown, and then I will also touch base on our budget quickly. So, since I began with the bid in 2019, I've been working remotely, it's been, you know, through COVID, that was fine as well, when I began, it was really, it was nice, the discussion of office space did come up, but the idea of working remote was great for me because I was really able to spend a lot of time moving from place to place throughout downtown, and meeting with different business owners, you know, working from Sunny's or Stark Infectionery or whatnot. So, you know, fast forward to where we are now, I am still working remote from home, the only employee of the bid on the administrative side, and I do also tend to share some space with the Chamber of Commerce down on Main Street. So while I'm down on Main Street in the Chamber of Commerce office, more so when we have Alive on 25 going on, or our events, there's many people that walk into the Chamber of Commerce office looking for the bid. So, you know, I think that there's definitely a need for us to have an office downtown, and something that is walkable and invites people to come in. We've worked really hard in the past two years to rebrand the bid and position it as downtownriverhead.org, you know, not many people really know what a business improvement district is, and the Riverhead bid is really unique because we take on a lot of the community creative placemaking as well with events, inviting, you know, commerce, but also tourism, community support, we work with a lot of the local committees, everything from the Veterans Committee, you know, with the banners, down to anti-litter, and, you know, we sit on all these meetings and whatnot, so we really think that it would be great for us to take the knowledge and the communication that we have with the town, and with all of the different committees, and be able to position ourselves at a physical location downtown where people can come in and have conversations with us, in a casual environment, and kind of be allies in between the town of Riverhead and the business community, the residents, and also visitors. So, we've been looking at a few different office spaces downtown, we were lucky enough to have a couple of tours, we toured the Gala Building, we toured, let's see, it is 112 East Main Street, which is a building in between the Suffolk Theater and the law firm next to it, there are some other vacant buildings, and they are the ones that were purchased by the town of Riverhead recently, so we were specifically looking at the 127 East Main Street location as well, which is a former wellness center next to Crafted. So we're weighing all of our options, we're looking at office space that's owned privately, and also office space that, you know, could potentially be through the town, and some means of support. So we'd like to give some options, you know, depending on what the town has planned for their space, with Town Square coming up, you know, I'm sure there's opportunity there as well, but we'd like to get something in place sooner, even if it's a temporary location. So with 127 East Main Street, you know, it's right in the heart of town, it's, people could walk right in, we could have some signage in the front window, and if there's no use for that space right now, it's been vacant, it's all along, the bid is interested in utilizing some office there. I do believe that there are a couple of rooms in that space, as well as a lobby in the front, so there's potential for us to also bring in the Chamber of Commerce, being that we work so closely together, we've had those conversations with them, and it all just kind of depends on what direction we end up heading in.
Yes, we discussed this last night at the bid meeting, and quite honestly, I think that location is ideal. First of all, they really need to be, I believe, on the first floor downtown. You need to be the face of the downtown as the bid and as the chamber, and if we, if there's any way we could possibly work out 127 East Main Street, I think that would be an ideal location, it's central, it's big enough to fit, where you, like you say, there's a lobby for both of you, and you could have a small conference room back behind that. I know you mentioned the place between the theater and the law office, I think that presents some other problems in terms of having sanitary in there.
Right.
So I, I mean, of all the places we discussed and looked at, I would fully support the 127 East Main, obviously, we would have to look into that with our town attorney's office and make sure that it's, it would be doable, and agreeable for everybody on the board.
Right.
But that's, that's my recommendation, after meeting with you guys last night, I think that's the best location possible.
Two things you brought up with the town attorney's office, and we do, and we should also incorporate the fact that we are going to have offices in the Town Square.
Okay.
And that's, they're developing the plans now, that there's community input, you're a part of the community input, and there is quite a potential for us to have offices in, obviously, they would be ideal to occupy.
As a temporary location, oh, I think this would be perfect, till something else comes up, this would be ideal.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's two things I really like about what's been said here, I definitely think it's great for you guys to have a presence right in the downtown area, right on Main Street, and it's just great to even be talking about bringing the Chamber and the bid together. That often baffled me, why that wasn't the case, so I think that's perfect.
Yeah, the Chamber has been very supportive of the bid, and, you know, likewise, the bid is very supportive of the Chamber, they have a great team over there, Liz, the executive director, she came on about the same time that I did in 2019, and, you know, just being thrown into everything together, we've really bonded and been able to work through hurdles together and learn together. With that said, working with the Chamber is great too, because it really expands our reach to, beyond downtown, so I do attend a lot of their networking events, and mixers, things like that, and it does allow me to have conversations with other business owners and employees throughout Riverhead, and a little bit beyond, on behalf of the bid, and tell them what we're doing, and then also inform them of what's going on downtown, such as events and new businesses and things like that, so...
And I'm not surprised that you and Liz work well together, you were both great additions to Riverhead.
Thank you very much.
And I saw your smiles last Thursday, all the pizzas being carried around.
Oh, yes.
Really interesting and great to see.
Can you give a quick advertisement on what Kids Zone is, coming up next?
Sure, so Kids Zone is going to be on Pecan Avenue, and then we are incorporating Grand Chabot Park as well for an outdoor movie, with the hopes that, you know, families come down, they get a bite to eat on Main Street, you know, maybe have a cocktail, or, you know, a local craft beer or whatnot, and then as the night progresses, gets a little bit dark, where normally they would be heading home, where they have a place to sit down with the kids, they could bring their chairs, blankets, you know, have a little picnic, and watch a movie on the TV, we're looking forward to it, it's exciting.
It's such a beautiful park.
It really is.
Do we know the movie yet?
We do not know yet, actually, we left it up for the kids to decide, because I felt like they know much better than me what they want to watch.
Great.
So not only did you have your best Alive on 25, you're going to have a bigger one coming on next Thursday?
Yes, yes.
June 12, July 29?
July 29, yes.
5 to 9:30, correct?
5 to 9:30 PM, yes, yes, thank you.
Guys, you're great.
So the second subject that we wanted to touch base on today is the 2021 Bidma budget, which kind of rolls over into the 2022 as well. So currently, right now, the 20% of the Bidma budget, well, let me backtrack, the Bidma budget for 2021 is $121,300. 20% of that, the amount of $24,993, is, has been contributed to the general fund contribution through the town of Riverhead. So, a little bit of a background on bid funding, our funding is not included in the general fund typically, our funds come from bid tax on parcels downtown, and then the town of Riverhead General Fund, our understanding is dependent heavily on county, state funding, where the Bidma does not receive that funding, so our budget is just strictly that $121,300. So, we depend on those tax funds, and 20% of it is a big chunk to freeze for, you know, now that we are rolling into normalcy again, bringing back the programs that we're doing, and also initiating new programs downtown, we are looking to have those funds put back into the bid budget, and that will allow us to regenerate those funds back into downtown, driving commerce and tourism through all of the events, and marketing and efforts that we put in across the board, so we're looking for the town board's support on that matter. Some of the things, as far as the funding, where we would spend that, we do not have a line budget as of yet, we have not, you know, explored that, we wanted to see if it was possible first, but some of the things that we would probably use that 20% funding for, we go back to the office space, like we just mentioned, we've done bid grants for business hardships, such as the outdoor dining grants, things like that, we're looking to possibly, with the new office space downtown, and really having a presence, we're looking to possibly become sort of a new business incubator, so having a little bit of funding for us that's a flex spending will allow us to help other businesses come into town and would give them support. Our marketing efforts include advertising partnerships with organizations such as Discover Long Island, and kind of spreading beyond that, we're looking to put in some new initiatives. We're currently in the process of building Riverhead Ale Trail, which will incorporate our downtown and surrounding craft beer breweries, and then also the distillery, so we're looking to apply for an RADC grant, the deadline is next week, so we're putting that in soon, and we do need match funds for that grant, they require 30% match, so funding would go toward things like that. And then we also do capital improvements, such as beautification downtown, banners and signage, we're looking to increase that as well. And we'd like to incorporate some alleyway projects, the alleyway that's between the Chamber of Commerce office and Parabel is, it's a little dingy down there, you know, it's not well lit, and it's not inviting, and it really, now that, you know, the parking lots are just beautiful in the back, the riverfront looks fantastic, you know, driving along there, and we really like to bridge the gap between the back of the buildings and the riverfront to Main Street, and we do feel that putting some art installations or some light or something like that in the alleyway will really invite people to walk through and to come up on Main Street.
And those are things that I think you probably know came up in the pattern book.
Yes.
Working on alleyways, and that alleyway isn't particularly wide, but it has great potential, I think there are even like some old planters in there where they, back in the day, they had plants in there, but I think artwork would probably serve better, and have to maintain the plants, and good lighting.
Good lighting, it's so important, yes, I know they did install a light on the south side of the alleyway, it is shining, it's pretty bright, I've spoken with the new owner, Sarah Galetti of the Wellness Center, that's in that building right next door, there's a tattoo shop coming in as well, and the light kind of shines into their second floor, so it's very, very bright, so we'd like to, you know, put some color down there, and bring in local artists, and maybe it could be something that is regenerated every year, and, you know, we would like to add some diversity, you know, and culture through the arts, and, you know, I've sat on the anti-bias task force, you know, listening to their meetings, I was at the workshops that they did, and we would also like to increase our presence in that sort of, that part of the community, and increase our events from a diversity and cultural perspective as well, and reach out to other committees, so a lot of what we're planning is, you know, really dependent on like the funds, like I mentioned, and then also the office space, just having a common area to have these meetings and discussions.
So I think the, that's something about Riverhead, I think our diversity actually should be celebrated.
Absolutely.
So I love that idea, thank you for talking about that, and on the lighting, I would think the wellness people don't like that lighting shining in.
Right.
I would think if you're... I would think if you're, I don't know what they're doing up there, yoga or something, bright light shining in wouldn't be good. What's, I can't think of the lighting, they use it in patch halls, you know, like the string lighting.
Right.
Might even work. I think we have looked into it, and there are outlets down at one end or the other in that, this alleyway that you're talking about.
Right, um, we, we've been looking at a few different options. We have a couple of proposals on that alleyway. And it, you know, it's working, either we're working with an artist and it's more of an art installation type of thing, and we're kind of leaving the power and the, the project up to their creativity. And then we've also been speaking to landscape architects and technology groups as well from the other side, from more of the operational standpoint and where power would need to plug into, what sort of a system we would need and whatnot. We're looking at a general proposal for one alleyway around $50,000.
Well, that's great stuff, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank Steve Shogga, Kristi Parity, and of course, Tim. He has always, collectively, we have done, they have done a great job and continue.
It's, it's my pleasure, because they're a great organization.
I know.
And the work that they do and the love they have for this town is, it's incredible, and it shows in everything that they do. So I love working with you guys.
Yes, keep up the great work.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I enjoy working with everyone, and, you know, I do have, I say this all the time, I have to give Steve Shogga credit. I am an employee of the bid, and he is a volunteer, and they, he just gives, you know, 200% to everything he does for the bid, so.
He's, he's the energizer bunny.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you on Thursday.
Thank you.
Okay, next I'm gonna ask Tim and Ken to introduce.
Phil, did you just want to address the, yeah, the budget?
Good morning, all. So the 20% that was cut.
Okay, we're back to the bid, okay, and then we'll go on to the next topic.
The 20% that was cut was cut from the BIDMA budget, but it's in the bid district, not in the general fund. Makes it easy for this board to just take that money and transfer it to wherever they want to spend it, whether it's capital projects or whatever. We're just taking it from the bid fund balance and giving it to the BIDMA as we cut everybody last year by 20%, waiting to see what was happening with COVID. So it's a simple resolution, once the board agrees on what they want to do with it, let me allow it to prepare a resolution.
Can you prepare the resolution?
Well, yeah, once they, yeah, once they present what they're gonna use it for, then it'll just be a transfer of funds from bid to BIDMA.
Good, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Okay, uh, next I'm gonna ask Tim and Ken to introduce the next item, which are matters concerning building permit fees.
So I met with Jefferson Murphy, and we, we do gather with the code revision committee.
You guys can come up here, there's, this is mic'd.
No, it's okay, you can stand there.
And then we can spread out.
Now, hold on.
The chair will work for you.
Yeah, you can stay where you are, you're only speaking one at a time. Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to say that when we.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. When we first looked to, to begin to potentially address this, I just wanted the general public to know that when we're discussing building permit fees, these fees, as far as we have, not been adjusted or in over 16 years, right?
Amazing.
And so this is not something that, you know, that, that has been looked at or revised in a long time. We're not looking to, just to defray any panic, these are very minimal increases. They're probably not what the fees should be in 2021, but we're making small steps to eventually to bring ourselves up as opposed to a sudden drastic impact financially on any of our, our developers and things of that nature. So I just wanted to right away say it's, it's been 16 years long overdue, and we're slowly beginning the process to bring those fees up to what they should be today.
And in doing so, and in realizing these fees and why you made them what they are with the recommendations, I know you, you did a lot of work with the surrounding towns to look and look at their fee schedules and compare. And some places we were extremely low, some places we were okay, some places we were a little bit over the top. And I think this is a real good presentation of a fair fee schedule for the work that's being done. So I thank you guys for the work you did on this.
A lot of the credit goes to Andreas Sofopoulos, I'm gonna turn it over to him in a second. As you recall, prior to the pandemic, I was up here giving the same introduction about the planning department fees, because those, some of those fees had not been updated since the 1980s. So it's, it's been long overdue for both, both departments. Unlike the planning department, the building department fees are a direct correlation to, and benefit to the homeowner or to the businesses, not really to the benefit of the community as a whole. When we review a subdivision or a site plan, we're reviewing that not only on behalf of the developer or the business owner, we're reviewing that for the community also to ensure their safeguard. When we review these applications with a pool, a deck, and a dish and that sort of thing, it's really for the benefit of, of the, of that individual. So the fees proportionally are higher for building fee than they would be for, for planning review fee. So I just want to give that kind of broad overview, and then I'll happily turn it over to Andreas.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Andreas, thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So as, as Ken had noted, you know, the fees haven't been raised in a long time, and the building department is, has a large area of coverage to work with in a lot of different projects. So the fees that are proposed to be raised, I think, are minimal in nature and will not impact each homeowner separately a lot. But as a whole, the revenue that will be generated hopefully will help the town to be able to better serve the public in the building department and maybe help us bring up to speed more, you know, more, get, get up to date on building permits to get online and stuff like that down the road.
Andreas, I think this also is gonna help us to be able to budget better for more staffing, because the staffing level is really low.
Yes, lowest I've seen other, where there's like three inspectors or.
Yes.
Electrical inspector and more staff, office staff too.
Right.
So it would be wonderful.
So that's another reason that this is being done, but not the only reason, just wanted to make that clear.
I can't understand how we have fees and a set fees, and they haven't been raised in all these years. And so we, our code has to really be revamped. And I know you guys have been at it for the last three months, running with it and all these changes. And it's so great to see finally in our code that we're having a positive impact, that things are happening, and it's being adopted. And this was a very important component of it, and Ken, thank you, and Tim for taking the lead on this and saying we gotta do something. And I think you mentioned it to us like three weeks ago, and all of a sudden, it's that work session, and we're gonna move forward with it. And that's the way it should be.
And it, it sets a precedent for the future, so our fees are gonna be in the future, set by resolution. So I think part of the, the slow process of years past not tackling this on is that it was a lengthy, you know, set involved in terms of now, you know, opening up to a public hearing when you're changing town codes and where fees are. So this done by resolution makes it simpler. But I think one of the biggest aspects of this is that when you gather in their office, so Andreas and Jefferson, you guys have been great, Greg, but there are, I'm not gonna say hundreds, maybe thousands of plans that you guys start to review, and you begin this process, and many of them at the builder's or, or developer's request, you know, doesn't come to fruition. And so this, we're going to be asking for these fees upfront now, prior to review.
Right, we're working on a whole host of changes, hopefully, with you guys.
Yeah, and so the idea of that you guys are spending countless hours going through this stuff, and then they decide, well, we're gonna hold off on this project, we're not ready, we don't have the proper funding, and, and your office has invested a ton of time, with fees upfront sets the precedent, you're getting paid for your work, whether or not, you know, it comes to fruition on, on, on the developer's side of things.
Skin in the game.
Yes, so I, I think that, that's a great step for your office, and as I said, and it's certainly gonna help with your staffing on top of what Tim said, just by having the fees, but just that we're not, we're not having you work on projects that have no intention or just ideas, concepts, and that never comes to fruition.
And I'll be looking forward to working with you guys on that, because I have a lot of thoughts of that process already, so.
Yeah, and thank you for your vision on that. I don't know of any applications where you apply and there's a fee associated, and they don't ask for it upfront. So it just.
You're the only town that doesn't do that as of, that I know of now.
Yeah, I don't know anyone. You know, you, you wanna be part of this, or you want an approval, here's the application, give us the fee. So, great, great job.
And I'm gonna say, Andreas, that I like that as soon as you came to Riverhead, you were proactive and right away started looking at ideas and things, you know, that needed updating and ideas of moving the town forward, so thank you for working on this.
Thank you for that, I've been in building departments a long time.
Yes, I know.
Look forward to finishing my career in one.
Right, but as soon as you got to Riverhead, you started looking for places to make good changes.
I thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, have a good day.
You guys have a great day.
You too, thank you both very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, Ken and Tim, you've both been, have been working with code revision, and I'm gonna turn it over to you regarding the amendment to chapter 213. Ken, are you gonna take the lead on that?
I can, if you want.
Oh, Tim, either one?
Both can do things together, I think perhaps we should bring Eric in, right, if he's available.
Cause, is Eric in?
And so while we're waiting, just, this came about, you know, we began early this year with Pedal Share. Pedal Share has been successful, I, I've spoken to Chris Diamond, who's running the project on behalf of Pedal Share. He is very impressed, he says it usually takes a few years to kind of develop the usage, and that, that's the bike program, you know, the bike share program. And he's like, actually, he feels that it's, it's being, progressing at a faster rate than he thought. He thinks it's awesome up at EPCAL. And so the electric scooters is a, is a different option, but we needed to address legally before something like that could come to Riverhead exactly what they are. Are they bicycles, are they motor vehicles? And so that's why it was a necessity to put this into town code, basically clarifying what they are.
Well, they, they are defined in the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law. So that was a big, big help and a big part of being able to put this together. There are certain restrictions for them, they're not allowed to go over 15 miles an hour, and they're not allowed to be operated on any road that has a speed, a posted speed limit in excess of 30 miles an hour. So they're really meant not to be used up on Route 58, but they're really meant to be used in a downtown, quiet residential street, back streets off of Main Street type area. And that's really what this, what this code is, addresses. Obviously, we think they're gonna be used from going from place to place downtown, but we don't want them necessarily used going from brewery to brewery downtown, because that falls within the guidelines of operating one of these while intoxicated. It is an offense, and you could be arrested for it. So it's something that has to be considered. Deputy Town Attorney Howard went through this and went through the law and made this work and defined our downtown area for where these scooters are gonna be used, so they wouldn't actually have a chance to get onto a roadway that's a 55 mile an hour roadway or, or anything higher than 30. And actually, Eric, with that, I'll let you, if you wanna address any issues on this.
Okay, so a couple of points. Good morning.
How are you?
Morning, everyone.
Good, welcome.
Yeah, yeah, those drafts. Okay, so we, two, two amendments that were made include a provision that, that more or less says that these aren't going to be operated on, on roadways that are 30 miles per hour or more posted speed limit. And also a, a provision requiring protective headgear to be worn when you're operating one of these scooters. I don't know if the attach, did the attachment make it around all the council members?
Yes, we all have it.
Okay. And so last year, the New York State Legislature added a section to the Vehicle and Traffic Law authorizing municipalities, towns to implement provisions of code permitting electric scooters and permitting municipalities to engage or contract with shared electric scooter ride sharing systems. So it's, it's my understanding that this Bird Scooter Company is one of those, so that's sort of the impetus for this. This legislation would cover operation of any electric scooter, so if, if a resident has an electric scooter, these would be the provisions that they would be required to follow. The shared scooter system is its own specific, is its own specific provision in the code, and that, those are the ones that would typically be confined in operation to a certain area of the town that would be determined by the town board.
And I want to say, because I mentioned Pedal Share earlier, drafting this, there is no intention for this to be, this won't be permitted up at EPCAL, that is our, our bike running path and bike bicycles. So this is not that. This, you know, outside of legislation, the concept and idea, this also has a geosystem that, you know, won't allow them to, to function on Main Street, you know. And so we can direct more specifically through their geo system towards where they're permitted and where they're not permitted.
Well, if there's a desire to specifically prohibit operation of electric scooters at EPCAL or any of the roadways located on the EPCAL property, that can be, you know, I can implement that into the code.
Yep.
Just for the people watching, also understand that they're not to be operated at night. They can operate a half hour before sunrise and a half hour after, two until a half hour after sunset. So lighting and, and other issues that you might be concerned about are addressed, because they, they can't drive them at night.
Correct, and while, while I have in there a provision requiring protective headgear, the, the VTL provision that was put in by the state legislature is sort of meant to be a, you know, a starting point. So if you want to implement more restrictive standards, you're permitted to do that. And they do have a provision that mentions, you know, that you have the ability to add, add in something requiring them to wear some sort of reflective fabric or something, you know, that would make them easy, easier to identify by other, you know, passing vehicles.
So I know there are some areas I've had problems with safety with these scooters. I'm a little concerned, and I mean, I think the idea of having them downtown is good, but I am a little concerned about Main Street, because if you've ever been sitting down there at a restaurant, there's giant vehicles come flying down Main Street. It's actually a busy road. So two areas I'd be worried about, Route 58, yes, and Main Street. All the side streets and all those other downtown area streets are good, but I don't know, we just think we have to look and think about Main Street just because they're gonna be on the street, correct, or not?
Yeah, they would be on the, they would be on the road, yeah. They, they cannot be operated greater than 15 miles per hour. I think posted downtown is 25. I mean, it's.
Well, I'm not worried about them overpowering someone. I'm more concerned about someone on a scooter getting hit, just because I'm always surprised at the massive size vehicles that go down Main Street. Just a thought.
I mean, you know, regulation on the size of vehicles that are on Main Street, I, I don't know if that's something.
We can't regulate that.
It's really no difference in a bicycle.
It's a state road.
And it's a state road.
That's true.
Be, be mindful of that, we don't regulate what kind of cars, we have an, I think we can input, right, have an input on it, but that's already code, state code, and whatever vehicles they allow, they allow.
Well, with, with Route 58, I think that's, that's posted 35 plus.
Right.
All up and down, so that you wouldn't be able to ride an electric scooter on Route 58.
Right, okay, and that's.
That's good.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
You're very welcome.
I know you got a very busy schedule.
He's keeping you busy.
But thank you for doing this and getting this done, so thanks.
Not a problem.
All right.
Thank you, Eric. And by the way, another cute picture on Riverhead Local, your kids are also on, in a picture from last night.
They're the stars. They're the only reason that we get our picture on Riverhead Local. Should I, I stay, I think rental is up next.
Yes, I mean, and just also so the public knows, this, this draft basically goes to public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Change town code just to.
Yes, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Anytime we change code, public hearing, public has to weigh in. All right, I, I don't know, I see all the work sessions are all about chapter changes and code changes, but that's a great thing. And once more, we're gonna have Ken and Tim to talk about amendment to chapter 263.
Well, this was another thing that came before code revision, it's been a work in progress for some time. And it's something that needed to be updated and addressed. And I, I have to say, with code enforcement, with Officer Rich, investigator Rich Downs, and Eric have put together something here that is very close to being completed with the. with the finalized rental fees and everything. And I, Eric, I'll turn it over to you at this point in time. But this has been a long time coming, and I'm glad we're finally to the end of it.
Welcome back.
Okay, so, the, the rental, the rental permit fees, we wanted to revisit because they've been, it's been, you know, for your basic, single-family residence, rental permit fee is three hundred dollar fee every two years. That's a little bit inconsistent with, with what other municipalities are doing. Their, our, our fee is a little bit low, so we wanted to, we wanted to restructure that in a way where it's still going to be a two-year, it's still going to be a two-year permit, but the fee is going to be based on the number of rooms that you have in the house. So, if, if it's a one-bedroom house, we don't know the final fee structure yet. The, the number one step is, is we're taking the fee schedule out of the code and the, and the permit fees are going to be established by town board resolution. And this will allow the town board a little more flexibility in mending what the fees are from time to time as the town board sees fit, without having to go through a whole public hearing and a formal code amendment, all right? And so, the, the fee structure that we're going to be proposing is going to be based on the number of bedrooms in, in a structure. So, if you have a one-bedroom house, it's going to be whatever fee is, I think, for, for example, the town of Brookhaven does a ninety-five dollar fee for a one-year permit for a one-bedroom house, all right? So, Rich, Rich and I are still working on what we're going to do for that fee amount, and we're going to propose that to the town board either at a, at a subsequent work session or through code revision. But the point being, the fee's going to be more if it's two bedrooms, three bedrooms, four bedrooms. Any, anything four bedrooms and over will probably be the same fee. But we, we feel like that's more consistent with the effort and the time for the code enforcement officer to go to the property and do an inspection. And where you have a one-bedroom house, the, the chances of multiple inspections is lower than, you know, a larger house with three-plus bedrooms. You know, there's more chances that, there's more, there's more conditions that could arise that would cause the, the inspection to fail and the code enforcement officer to have to do a reinspection at a subsequent time. There was a, there was a slight inconsistency. We were measuring the effective date of the permit from the date that you file your application. And so, technically, you know, most, most people are renting at the time that they filed the application, okay? And, you know, technically, that's a violation because they don't have a permit yet. So, what we've done here is we've, we've slightly restructured it so that once you file your application, your, your property's going to be considered part of the rental registry, right? So, you're going to, so, you're sort of going to have a three-month period of time where you're not in violation of town code for not having a rental permit because your application's filed, right? Then, so you have three months to get the permit past the inspection. And then, and then the permit will go forward from there. And then, the other provisions that we amended, we took a look at the penalties for offenses. Currently, our, our fine, our fine for a first offense was a range of two hundred and fifty dollars to a thousand. We're, we're looking to boost that up a little bit to five hundred dollars for a first offense, up to fifteen hundred for a first offense, a, a fine of fifteen hundred or more than three thousand for a second offense committed within the same five-year time period. And then, a twenty-five hundred dollar fine, up to a six thousand dollar fine for a third and subsequent offenses within a period of seven years. And now, you do that seven years because we have the biannual permit. If you make within five years, it, it doesn't make sense because you can't get three permits within the five years if, if you're ultimately getting the permit. So, does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Eric, have we checked with our courts on this, the justices, as to how they feel? Does they have their forces?
The judge, I, I haven't asked the judges for an opinion on the fines. I could.
Yeah, Ken, just to make sure they're on board and they know this is coming.
I mean, I know that, I know that two hundred and fifty dollars as a first offense is sometimes considered low given the, given the amounts that people are typically charging as monthly rent. So, if your typical landlord is charging anywhere between, you know, fifteen hundred to two hundred, fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars per month for rent, you know, a two hundred and fifty dollar fine for not having a rental permit is, you know, it doesn't really, doesn't really hurt that much. So, you know, you want to have an effective deterrent in place. And so, that, that's why we wanted to take a look at increasing these. Now, another, another provision that we put in to these penalties is a provision making it clear that, you know, if you're a landlord and you have multiple properties within the town, that your, the number of your offenses aren't specific to the property. They're specific to you, okay?
Interesting.
So, you know, so, so, yeah.
Because the majority of the landlords in town are decent people and they run their ship right. But for those that don't, they seem to go to the extreme. And those that don't, a lot of times, are multiple building owners. They, they have multiple properties and, you know, this is a way to kind of shake them up a little bit and say, hey, get your act together. Enough is enough. And I think that's what we're trying to do here.
If you receive a violation without rental permit in Wady River, and then at the same point, a month later, you're, you're determined to not have one in Jamesport, it's really a second offense. And you can't, you know, defy it as ignorance, that you just didn't know it. It's my first time in Jamesport. No, you were already warned of the law.
Right.
So, I'm glad that we're going after the, you know, I agree, there are a lot of good landlords, but I'm certainly glad that we're upping the fines and going after the landlords that don't, you know, that don't do things correctly. And, and I think you're correct, you're correct in saying that there are some people that just are willing to take the fine if it's not significant enough. They don't, they just don't mind, you know, breaking the law and taking the fine. So, I, I think it's good that we, I agree with you on that. If you could just back up a little bit and go back to the part where you talked about changing the code and not needing a public hearing, just go over that part that you talked about earlier again, make that clearer.
It would be the administrative fees. So, the, so the rental permit fee itself, which you pay to acquire the permit, is, you know, typically, I mean, it's an administrative fee. The town board sets by resolution many, you know, fees that the town departments charge for, you know, for like recreation, your, I, I think there was a discussion about building permit fees being done, being amended as well. This just sort of makes it easier for the, in my opinion, makes it easier for the town board to react to, to changing conditions that could, you know, that could, that could arise to make you feel the need to increase the fee for something, you know? So, if, if, you know, the, the code enforcement is keeping, keeping track of the, you know, amount of time that an investigator is spending reviewing applications or going to houses for inspections, and you compare that with, you know, what their hourly rate is, for example, right? And you find the, you know, on average, the amount of time that they're spending doing this is inconsistent with the amount of the, amount that you're charging for the permit fee, then you would want to be able to amend that and, you know, increase, increase the, increase the fee. It's just taking it out of the town code so that when you change those administrative fees, you don't have to make it a code revision that, you know, typically, a code amendment that typically takes, you know, anywhere from, you know, four to six to eight weeks.
And I understand that, as long as we don't keep just arbitrarily increasing the fees.
Well, no. And, and the important thing to remember is that it would still be done by a town board resolution. So, it would still be something that, you know, would be.
The public could comment on it.
Right. And it's, it's something that code enforcement and/or the town attorney's office would bring to the attention of either code revision or the code enforcement committee and discuss that first, and it would come to a work session, then it would be put up for a resolution at the, at the town board meeting. And then, it's still subject to public comment, discussion, all that.
Yeah, we want it to still be something that the public's aware is happening and that they're able to comment on it.
Right.
You've been busy.
I know. Well, it's very good.
There's more coming.
Yes, a lot. I never saw such movement in a department. Thank you, thank you. And again, these are fees that are being addressed that is to help with things such as overcrowded housing, illegal rentals. And you need infrastructure in place such as mechanical components in order to move code forward. And this is, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. And Bob, Bob sits quietly back there. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, I got one.
And Tim?
I went over and got one. I think these guys got, Eric, did you get it?
Okay, so, for our next item, I'm going to ask Dan McCormick to come forward with an update on our security cameras in the park. Apparently, last week, there was a press conference and someone else, there was a press conference unbeknownst to us in our office or attorney's office. There were some claims made. They brought the press conference later on in this afternoon. They brought it here to town hall with some supporters. And I just want you to be aware, this is in a response. We already were going to discuss this. I'm going to give a, we're going to have an update as much, as best as we can. But many of us in the, in the law enforcement field feel that our security was jeopardized for political purposes and someone holding a press conference, where they could have just contacted me, my office, Dan McCormick, or the town attorney's office, or even one of the councilmen. And so, we, we have Dan McCormick, who's been working. I know that I, I saw a hundred and twenty emails that were sent while you took on this project. Phase one was completed on our cameras, and phase two is beginning. The fact that it was asserted that there's no cameras out there, we're probably going to see an increase in crime. And that's unfortunately, unfortunate when you say there's no cameras there. You make, complete a press conference, then bring it to the town board, open it up, and then it becomes a show, and that's exactly what it was. And I, I am offended. And I, we're hoping that, you know, the crime doesn't. So, we are now forced to take taxpayers' money and actually put more police there now until we somewhat address. But anyway, we're going to move on.
No, we're not going to move on. I'm just going to respond, I'm going to respond to that really quickly. You need to realize that people that live in Riverhead are allowed to speak up on topics. This is how government works. You don't have control over the residents of Riverhead. So, it, it was completely within, the person that spoke out, within their purview to bring out something that they're concerned about as a community member.
Okay, and I'm going to say.
You're incorrect, and that's just, I'm sorry, that's ridiculous.
The, the community is always welcome, and we don't control the community. We encourage. However, public safety is not, not to be used for political purposes.
There was no public safety, there was the discussion.
Okay.
The public safety concern is that the cameras were sitting there for two years and were not, I'm speaking, that they were sitting there for two years and not connected. That is a public safety concern.
Did you contact my office? Did you contact the attorney's office before you held the press conference?
By the way, I am a sitting council member. I am able to speak. I don't work for you. Keep that in mind. I work for the people.
And so, so the whole council. But however, we're going to move forward with that. And I think, Catherine, I wish you had waited to see what the attorney McCormick had to say. And we're going to move forward from that. And Dan, welcome and good morning.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a status update regarding this particular project. And I am also going to provide a comprehensive chronology of events concerning the various efforts from a multi-department perspective and a multi-vendor perspective regarding these particular projects. By way of clarification and the refreshment of our memory, the initial resolution concerning the allocation of grant funding for the security camera system, both in the railroad station area and Grand Javel Park, was enacted by town board resolution on August twentieth, two thousand nineteen. At that time, then supervisor Laura Jen Smith, as well as the sitting town board at that time, council members Wooton, Giglio, Kent, and Hubbard, passed that resolution based in part on the dedicated efforts of our community development agency, Director Dawn Thomas, as well as her staff, in securing funding in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand plus dollars at that particular point. Those funds were earmarked and dedicated for not only the purchase of the respective camera equipment and system, but also for any infrastructure requirements at that particular time. Subsequent to the enactment of that resolution in August of two thousand nineteen, various vendors were at that particular point recruited for this particular project. Now, it's very important to clarify, this was always understood to be a multi-phase project based on resource constraint and personnel constraint. We have multiple vendors involved even to this moment. The town pursuant to that resolution in two thousand nineteen recruited and contracted with a company known as A Plus Technology. They were to be our technical services vendor regarding the camera installation. Of course, we needed to utilize Optimum connectivity, and so, Optimum through Altis was involved as well as their separate third-party vendor at that particular point. Why I bring this up as a clarification is, we've got multiple entities involved with this particular project. In addition, we had from inception multiple town departments, namely, not only the police department and Chief Hager Miller's efforts, we had multiple engineers from the engineering department, we had multiple representatives from the information technology department, and obviously, myself through the town attorney's apartment, as well as the town attorney, Bob Kozakovic. So, we had multiple people from the get-go to address this from a multi-phase perspective. The first priority, in part based upon the recommendation of Chief Hager Miller, was the railroad station area. Not only the railroad station, but the street area and the parking lot district, as well as some additional poles, which at this particular point, I will not specify for security purposes. That was the initial phase, and our vendor, as well as Cable Vision's vendor, were notified of that particular aspect. I do want to also point out at this particular point, supervisor Avet Agiar, in one, as a reminder, as one of your first official acts as a supervisor, on February seventh of two thousand twenty, you were here barely a month at that particular point, as well as the dedicated members of the town board in authorizing you to sign the initial property access agreement, which you did on February seventh of two thousand twenty, even before the next scheduled town board meeting, which was later that month. And the reason that was done is because you yourself had said at that particular point, based upon your training, education, and experience as a former New York City police detective, you wanted to move this project as quickly as possible and provide everything Cable Vision and Optimum needed to move this project forward. And based upon the efforts of your fellow town board members who authorized you to sign that, that agreement, which you did, I then sent that off so Cable Vision and its vendor would have access to that railroad station area so they could conduct their initial evaluation and preliminary analysis. You then, by ratification, ratified that agreement at the later February meeting in two thousand twenty. It's important to point that out because, again, we had multiple departments involved here, and certainly, the town board at that particular point was addressing this from a contractual standpoint. After that particular date, we then set up two separate onsite meetings. That is, the engineering department, myself, information technology. And we went out to both the railroad station site and later that month, in March, the Grand Javel Park site. Why? To conduct a preliminary analysis, analysis as to the wiring, the cable areas, as well as the box areas with regard to that infrastructure. Of course, we know in March of two thousand twenty, our, our world, right? Our lifestyle, our perception changed dramatically, not only here in the town of Riverhead, not only in Suffolk County, but in the state of New York and across our nation. Because in March of two thousand twenty, as we all remember, we probably don't want to remember this, right? We entered the dark phase of COVID. We entered the dark phase of COVID. Why do I bring that up now? Because what happened was, at that particular point, multiple businesses, right, including Optimum and Cablevision, right, started facing a series of operational headwinds, right? Even from things as simple as scheduling onsite inspections became extremely difficult because, as we know, Governor Cuomo issued his executive orders, which were subsequently amended. And as we know, Town Hall came to a close in late March of 2020 and remained closed for months on end. Cablevision, like many businesses even now, are struggling with two main considerations. One is personnel issues. Two is equipment and supply line issues concerning the acquisition and procurement of not only equipment, but devices and even components to address those concerns. And so, that was the time period by which we were commencing these particular multi-phase projects in regard to our urgent recognition that we wanted to enhance public safety in the town of Riverhead by creating a ring of security cameras. I note then, after that particular point, our vendors, as I said, began their systematic review of all those particular items. Now, parallel to phase one regarding the railroad station infrastructure acquisition and online servicing, Cablevision through Optimum also initiated their own in-house review of the service needs concerning Grand Javel Park as the second phase of that particular project. Now, just to elaborate, that includes, because this is a municipal project, considerations regarding prevailing wage law requirements in the state of New York. The acquisition of the proper vendors to actually address our concerns, as well as, as I said, the equipment procurement, device procurement, and certainly any components that would be needed at that particular time. In approximately September of 2020, the town of Riverhead, based on the input of the multi-department scenarios I referred to you before, as well as our vendors, were in the position of to conduct a test run of the signal from the cameras at the railroad station back to police department headquarters. Unfortunately, at that particular point, the system revealed two separate issues. One was a signal deficiency coming from the camera system down in the railroad station back to police department headquarters. The second issue that reared its head was a concern regarding the upload capacity of those visual images. From a technical standpoint, of course, the visual images require more upload than even audio signals, to my understanding of the technical specs. What that required was a comprehensive review and electronic audit from both our A+ technicians as well as Cablevision's technicians. Thank you. I actually, just to, thank you very much, Amory. I've just received a message, actually, that Optimum has called me to schedule a site inspection today of the Grand Javel Park area, so.
In 10 minutes.
If you could.
I know it's a lengthy process.
Okay, can you do me this courtesy? Can you kindly call Chip, who I already alerted this morning, and Drew and Ken, who were both alerted as well, to meet at the pump house? Thank you very much.
And, you know, I just want to also add, because I have been, within the last week, I have spoken to them, and I wish that anybody should have reached out to you, to myself, and anybody in the council, and any department member can reach out. But I did speak to them recently, and they also had addressed employees. It still is a lack of employees across, even our farmers can't get, and businesses are having a hard time getting employees. So that was one of the, I mean, it was a lengthy process, and this was almost just about to reach its culmination. And again, any member, and I'm asking the council, please, if you, you are, we operate together as a council. There's no finger pointing here. Anybody can take the lead on any project and communicate. I am the supervisor, I like to, my position is to assist with the administration of it, but every council member has equal authority to contact anybody and to take on. And I know Tim, once in a while, does it, and comes to me, and you've been, you know, busy, so, and I know that you have to go, you had something to say, Tim?
I just wanted to say that part of this with Optimum, I'm not making excuses for them, but part of it with the pandemic, as you started touching on, Dan, was that all of a sudden, people that were going to work where they had fully functioning Wi-Fi and Internet and everything else, were now staying home. So now, Optimum's workload increased significantly in trying to get people's personal Wi-fis and Internet connections and everything else upgraded or done completely because they had to work from home now rather than commuting into the city or up west or whatever. So, I know, and with limited work staff, it was, it was a two-pronged problem. So, like I said the other day, there was so much more to this than just saying, oh, it's Optimum's had us a day for a year and a half. They haven't. As you explained, there's so many different facets to this whole setup, from company, from camera company, to connection company, to logistics, to the chief, to, you know, there was so much more than this, and it was, I'm just sorry, it was portrayed as something that was just like kicked down the road, because it wasn't.
And you've been working with them for a long time and countless communications. And so, you know, financial markets depended on Optimum and Altice upgrading stuff to keep, keep our country stable and regional areas working. So that became like a priority, so, and being understaffed, you know, it was just hard for them to keep up on the demand, the request to upgrade systems. Everyone was working from home, or those that could. But I know you have, I know you've got more to share in terms of where we're going.
A lot more, but.
And what you've been doing, sorry.
I must, because I know he has to get going. I agree, and Tim, a great observation. They stressed to us that they overnight, they stayed closed, they had to service all their providers, they, all their customers, they had to enhance them, and they had to keep businesses operational. And so they were so overworked, and even though they were, they're finally, it's coming to fruition now, and all this is happening, I'm suspecting that people knew that this was all happening, that we're moving forward. And I, again, any town board member can go out there individually, we work as a town, pointing fingers, we solve problems. We don't point fingers. And, but anyway, we're going to let you.
Ask our IT staff how things change when COVID hits.
Yes. So you want to continue?
I do, thank you. And along that point, in fairness to Cablevision, our own vendor A+, themselves experienced personnel challenges with regard to their engineering division when we were trying to discern the basis for our own signal deficiency. So our own vendor had their concerns that had to be addressed, which unfortunately delayed the final operational component of this particular project. I'm happy to report, though, in February of this year, we became fully operational with the railroad station security camera system as phase one, which allowed all of the multiple vendors, as well as our multiple department personnel, to now turn their attention to the second phase of the project, which of course is the Grand Javel Park project. The good news is, because of our late March of 2020 meeting onsite at Grand Javel, Cablevision was able to construct at least a preliminary survey. That information was provided to them at that time, and they were able to evaluate, hence our meeting today. They're coming out today to do a final inspection as to the equipment that they will need to become fully operational. I'm also pleased to report that Optimum has represented, they endeavor to have their components up and running by July 30. This matter has been escalated up through Cablevision and Optimum management personnel. Quite frankly, we should be appreciative of their efforts as to what they're doing, given the fact that they've been dealing with these operational headwinds for the last year and trying to work with us as best as they can. And so, I'm personally thankful and gratified to know that they really are our broadband partner when it comes to getting these systems up and running, notwithstanding all the challenges that we've all faced as we went through this particular endeavor.
And we knew that this was coming up for, it was going to culminate, and we were going to move forward, and I know that you had a resolution, that you've been working within the last week with me, and I think you're going to bring it to work session?
Yes, actually, once you folks break, I have the property access agreement for Grand Javel Park prepared for the supervisor's signature, subject to the initial and ratification of the respective town board members here today. So I can email that to management personnel at Optimum, and we are in legally good standing concerning that aspect of this particular matter, which will obviously allow them to come out, which they're going to do irrespective of the fact that they don't physically have that agreement in their hand right now.
And that agreement was prepared a while ago. I know that you've been working on it, and it was already scheduled to be put on the session. And last night, I did call over to Optimum, I spoke to them, and everything was set, and they texted me last night, I asked them to give me a date, and they told us on and about July 30. And this was a very, very long process. This didn't come out, come out because of a press conference or something. We went through an entire, and I saw your emails, 120 emails back and forth. And I just wish that if anybody has an issue in this town, contact one of us, contact the supervisor's office, another council member, the attorney's office, and we're here, we're here to work with you and to move forward. And I know I've been working with you so hard on this, thank you, Dan, because it was a fee, and we got it, and we're moving forward, and we're going to up the police there to ensure until we can get the cameras, and it's going to cost taxpayers money, but we'll do what we have to do on law enforcement. Did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to say, no, I just wanted to commend Dan. I know you've been working on this a long time, we've talked about this, and I'm just, I'm sorry that you got attacked two weeks prior, you know, to the completion of this. You were just coming across the finish line with it, and so, but your work is greatly appreciated, and so thank you for everything you've been doing, I appreciate it.
So I'm going to chime in here. I'm sitting and listening to everything, and I have to say that there is so much tap dancing going on here at Town Hall lately, I seriously feel like I'm at a Broadway show. I am glad that our press conference yesterday prompted things. I think the timing is interesting that Cablevision wants to meet in 10 minutes, so I'm glad that's happening, that's a good thing. But that was such a litany of excuses that I literally couldn't count them all. I'm not going to go over all of them, but I do want to say, you know, if we signed an agreement, the supervisor in the board, there was an agreement signed on February 7, 2020, that was over a year and a half ago. So that was not fast action. Multiple departments were working on this. My feeling is, if multiple departments are working on something, all the more reason to move it along swiftly when you've got a lot of people helping with it. As far as COVID slowing down, I think during COVID, those actually turned out to be good months to work out agreements and have discussions because those kind of things were, you know, could be done online and could be done on Zoom meetings. So certainly, that isn't anything, any excuse. And the bottom line is that we need to get these cameras up and running, and if, you know, people from the commute, myself and Evelyn Hobson calling out these concerns and issues, got things moving, well then, that's a good thing. And lastly, I have to say, I don't really know how there could be signal problems. I mean, Optimum is a big company. They connect people from all over the place, so.
Have you ever dealt with Optimum?
Obviously not.
Holy no.
Obviously not.
And this is a side issue, but a lot of people in the community have talked about having, you know, one company that's difficult to deal with, and maybe we ought to look into that, but that's a whole other issue. But anyway, the bottom line is, if things finally get done here, that's a good thing.
I believe that you knew the process and where we were, and you decided to.
None of that is true. None of that is true.
Before we reach our culmination. But in either case.
I'm sorry, two years, really? Two years.
All right, Catherine, please, I just want to move on from this topic, I appreciate it.
Dan, you did great, thank you very, very much.
You did great, and you know what, keep it up, because we still have some more work. We got phase three.
And Dan, I have to say, you've been our unofficial mayor with Optimum and Altice over the years because you've had a great relationship with them. And if you couldn't get it done, nobody was going to get it done because you've got our system put in here, worked out a great deal with that, you worked out with them things such as for seniors getting some discounts on their, on their cable bill and different things. So I appreciate your work, and I know you've been working hard at this, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And at any time, anybody could have contacted you and got an update, and unfortunately, it wasn't done. The councilwoman has not reached out to you in a month, although the last town board meeting, she said that she constantly reaches out to you. But we're going to end this chapter.
Mr. McCormick, have I walked down and asked you, and have I reached out to you and asked about what was happening with the cameras?
As I recall, you spoke to me twice on this, and I sent you an email back in June giving you a full status update.
And I walked down and spoke to you on numerous occasions or came looking for you. So I was not directing everything towards you, I'm looking at the big picture here. But I did reach out to you, and I spoke about it publicly on numerous occasions.
Okay, and we're going to end this component, and again, Dan, we're moving.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our last discussion, which is, we are attempting to, actually, we are going to form, correct?
Yes.
We're going to form our Clean Drinking Water Committee, and I'm pleased to introduce the concept, along with my coworker, Councilman Ken Bathwell. This is a new committee, and we want to bring everyone together, the entire community, members of the CDA, representative, legislator, Krupsky, and I did write to Schumer's office and ask him if he would participate in this committee. So it's going to be a well-rounded committee, and it's to address the water concerns and issues that we have in Manorville. And Ken, you want to take it from here?
Yes, I think this is a great idea. There are a lot of things that we're doing to get clean drinking water to Manorville, but I think one of the things we have lacked supervisor is the communication with the residents. So for example, putting together a committee to formulate a questioning answering amongst all the departments to coincide and relay that information to residents. Frank Mancini, you know, I spoke to him about being, you know, just telling everybody about what the map and plan provided and how it was outlined, and what a great movement that is. And Dawn Thomas about the grant writing programs that she's established and that she's written and she's completed, getting funds, to Anne Marie's work within our legal department, and going back and forth with communications with all of our local representatives, state, federal representatives, she's constantly.
Lee Selden, who I've been working with, then, he went to Congress and he put in for funding, right?
So, yeah, and so, a lot of these components are taking place, and I think, you know, that the one thing that we're lacking, we haven't been able to share everything and outright sit down with the residents in Manorville and say, okay, here's what's happening. So I think you have a great idea to bring those residents in, to have, you know, members within the community to be a part of this.
A roundtable.
Roundtable discussion. It lets them know what we're doing, where we're at, what our timeframes are. I think it's excellent. And so, this is going to be a better communication between everyone so that they know the paths that we're taking. So we have not sat idle, there are a lot of things that are taking place. I think it could, you know, sooner than later, we need to do this, we need to get clean drinking water there, and let them understand and know all the avenues that we're taking. And so I think it's a great idea.
Great, and you'll be reaching out?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. And so.
And I do have some recommendations, we want to involve local, state, and federal government.
Yep, absolutely.
They are a key component. All right, so I'm going to move on.
So I just want to comment on that. Kind of brings me back to my high school days when we were at a football game and we were yelling, "We want action." I think the people in Manorville will be glad to be at the table. I think it's a good idea to, you know, bring them in and let their voice be heard, but I think the bottom line is, at the end of the day, they want action.
Yes, that's the purpose, we're all working on it. Thank you, Catherine. All right, I just have to, I missed somebody's name on the Riverhead Powerless Award, and Amy Lowe, the president of Conic Bay, was also on it with us last night, and she does a great job, she's our new president, and the communication with the hospital has been so great, and I know.
Especially with COVID.
Especially with COVID, and Tim, I know you are a liaison, and we have a really, this town has a really good relationship with them, and we're going to continue that, Conic Bay, know that, okay?
We do, and we have, and they've come so far, I mean, you go back to when we were little kids, Catherine, it was kind of referred to as Central Suffering was the name. But our hospital, our medical facilities. Uh, but our hospital, our medical facilities in this town have come such a long way. With stroke treatment, with the, with the catheterization lab, uh, orthopedic, our general surgeons. It's just where, years ago, you would, it was no question, if it was something serious, like, hey, I'm going west. I'm going up, you know, to Stony Brook. I'm going to the city. We have, uh, some world-renowned surgeons right here in our own backyard. And it's very comforting to know, because next Wednesday, I will be having surgery on my shoulder. And, uh, it's just nice to know that we have people that are very capable, and I feel very comfortable going locally.
And, and by the way, I wish you well in your surgery, Tim.
Thank you. I probably, just so that people know, probably be out a week or so. My wife says it's gonna be longer, but I said, you know, whatever I can do, if I can work from home or whatever, I will do. But if you don't see my face here, I still have my hand in what's going on, so.
Tim, I could probably, I could probably get Chip to set up a Zoom to you in your hospital bed.
Yeah.
What, um, in your injury, I, I was, so I'm sorry about your injury, but I had, had the opportunity to sit with the senior citizen advisory committee. And just because you mentioned Amy, I was so impressed at the different facets that she has. And, and throughout the hospital, I felt, I was like, am I at a hospital meeting or a town meeting, or a foundation?
She has a nursing background, so I think that's an interesting look for a CEO of a hospital because generally, it's a business background that somebody has as a CEO. But she's worked both sides, and now that she's in, her, her heart was in the nursing side. I think it gives her a much better idea of how to operate something such as the iconic Bay Medical Center. Andy Mitchell did a fantastic job. It's not a knock against him. But it's just a different set of eyes in a different time period. And, uh, I'm just, I'm very comfortable with the health care that we have in this town.
Yes, and congratulations. Yes, congratulations, Amy. I'm so proud to join, um, in, on, uh, to be a colleague of yours in this effort as being, Riverhead being recognized um, as a powerless and a mover and a shaker, and people having a positive, um, outlook of us. And the hospital does, Riverhead Town does, and that's, we should be proud of ourselves that we are at this level. Never before have we ever been recognized by a newspaper, um, along that line. So thank you again, and congratulations to Amy.
So I just want to jump in.
Thank you, everyone.
Sorry, Matt. Did you finish?
No, I was gonna close, okay.
Oh, I just wanted to say, um, you know, I agree with Tim. The iconic Bay Medical Center has just come such a long way. I think they're our biggest employer in town, too.
They are.
Yeah, and, uh, yes, Amy's doing a great job, and it was nice to see Andy last, Andy was at the James Ford Parade last night. Um, but before you close, I have a couple things I wanted to, comments I wanted to make on today's meeting. Um, I, I just wanted to say, you know, my feeling about work sessions is that work sessions are about, you know, we always say, uh, bring everyone to the table, and that's what work sessions are about. Work sessions are where we hash things out and have discussions, and where we collaborate on things. And I, I think that it's physically important for us to be at the table with people. That's where department heads come, or people from the public. And I know that historically, I mean, it doesn't, it's not a giant deal, but historically, we sat at the table. And I, I just think it, it makes for a better meeting. And, Tim, I know that you know historically, we always had work sessions at the table, so I'm, what do you think about it?
My concern is, I, I think, I'd rather be here, because when they come in and start spreading stuff, it's tight when we're all sitting around that table. So it's easier for me, I think, or better for me, to get up and come down and look at a map if I have to look at it. When they spread them, between our paperwork and theirs, the microphones get covered up, there's, there's issues with the sound. Um, I, I'm not an advocate either way, honestly, but I, I don't mind sitting up here.
I mean, it's just that I, I do like tradition, and this is traditionally where we work. But I also think that's because it is a work session up there. You know, I'm not comfortable almost like sitting up at a podium when we're supposed to be discussing with people. So, um, I'm gonna continue sitting down here.
Just think to be polite to the supervisor. She has a leg injury, so it's nice to be able to elevate a leg, and it would probably be inappropriate to try to do it down there.
Well.
I don't know. I had a broken ankle. I fractured my ankle last year, and I actually just elevated it down here. And I am glad to see that you're doing well. I saw that you're wearing heels again. I'm glad to see that, that you are healing and improving. So anyway, I had, I had one other thing I wanted to bring up, just.
Hold on, Catherine, Catherine, let me add to that. First of all, I am a foot bigger than you, so I don't fit under the table. I'm sorry on that respect, and I am wearing a brace. I have a spiral fracture, and which means it goes up the bone, and usually it's ninety percent. Get surgery, and they're trying to prevent surgery for me, and I had to have to discuss this because you are claiming, not only in this form, but you claimed before that there's nothing wrong, and so. And you've been part of this, so please keep my personal life and don't bring that into your.
I would never say that about, and I'm glad you're feeling better. I truly am.
But I'm not wearing, I, I wear a little bit of a heel, but I'm wearing a brace, and I only wear that once in a blue moon, um, when I have to go to a corporate event, and, but I'm in sneakers right now because of it, okay? And I'm not, I'm not well, and, you know, don't minimize. Take away, don't compare myself to your size, to your break, which is a fracture. Mine is a break, and it's a spiral break, okay? And, and again, please refrain from doing that. This is not appropriate. I have spoken to the council. If we want to sit here when we started moving away from COVID, you're never here. You show up for the meetings, and then you run out the door. I, I never see you, Catherine. So I have discussions individually, because we can't discuss it together unless we're in an open meeting. And I spoke to Tim, I spoke to Frank. My leg is elevated now. And I spoke to, I spoke to Frank, Tim, and Bathwell. So please just not make this a middle issue. If you want to stay down there, that's okay. I would love for you to join us. So we will coexist, okay?
Yeah, and I certainly didn't mean to minimize your injury. I know that it, it really was painful. So if that came across, I apologize for that. Um, certainly, I'm always here. I, I'm always here before and after meetings. But one other thing I wanted to bring up, um, you know, we did have a, a lot of good items on the agenda today. But I am, I was disappointed that there was not a discussion about the community benefit for Solar Two because that was stated on, at the July seventh meeting, that at the next work session, we would be talking about it.
Okay, so if you have those kind of concerns, those are administrative, it'd be nice to have a conversation and call my office and discuss it. Uh, and then we can move forward together, and I can advise you on it. The attorneys are working it out on both sides. They're not completed with, they haven't completed the, the process. And, um, Kyle, did you want to add to it? And these are the conversations that as a, as a, as a board.
We did all get a copy of it.
Okay. Okay.
I just want to take, oh, go ahead.
But we did get a copy. We got it amended. We all got the copy.
Yes.
Yes, they're working on it.
I just wanted to take a quick second to welcome JP back.
Oh, yes.
Our Newsday reporter. He's been gone for a while, and I'm glad to see you're doing well and getting around, and it's good to have you back in person.
Great point.
You can give good competition to Alec and Tim now.
Yes. Yes, and I personally, um, love working with you. And, again, welcome back. I think you had a injury in a car accident, and it's back, and it's neck or whatever it was. And, um, um, it's good to see you, and I hope we continue to see you, not just show up for one, one session.
The sides were good entertainment, JP.
Yes, we are. Don't you see what happens in town board meetings? Um, Tim, are you gonna report on that? Are you, Alex? Are you gonna report that? Can you see her? Come on. Okay, so, everyone, I hope that you remain safe, and, um, I don't, we don't have a board meeting, right? Not scheduled for, uh, for next week, and, uh, so the next one is on Thursday. And, uh, again, live at twenty-five, late plans. We'll be walking up and down, well, fortunately, I can't walk as much now, but I'll be driving up and down, and, uh, again, thanks to the entire community. And, um, in a moment, I'm gonna ask you to, um, to enter into executive session, and we're gonna discuss the following topics. It's contractual, under contractual, potential lease of a real property, and that's gonna be in, in Repudenti, and then we're gonna move on to personnel. And that's gonna be matters surrounding the appointment to fill a vacancy, and that's gonna be Tim Hubbard. And can I have a first and a second to go into executive session, please?
So move.
Second in.
All in favor? All opposed? So move. Be safe, everyone. Thank you.